A number of times when the issue first came to light and when that healing decision came to us. So I agree that I think it's just prolonging it and the hurt and distress it causes in the community is not continuing. By keep going, there's no threat. So at some point in time, I think it just needs to stop.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too agree with the councillor call and I feel we just seem to be opening up old wounds for the sake of doing so and it's totally unnecessary. And if it is an amendment to the motion or a motion is on right, then I'll definitely support it.
Thank you. Councillor Stockton, Councillor O'Mead.
One of the things you have to recognise in life is that if you have an unhealed wound which needs lancing, and when I say needs lancing, it needs to be addressed, how you address it isn't sympathetic to all parties. One of the problems we have is the vision of how the majority are seen. They must see through the prism of an individual. The individual isn't here today and that is because they're away. So what I would suggest is that we look courteously on the motion because it doesn't say everything that I would say, it doesn't represent everything that I want to do. But in the form of time, this would be a way of doing what was suggested, drawing a full op under the matter. It's the word in which goes into the press release that interests me greatly than saying that do a press release. I've been very cautious of having a press release drafted, which I hadn't seen, which represented my view. And I want to know what it said of having supported it because I'm not in the privileged position of knowing what that press release said if you put my support to it. I think that's a reasonable decision. And I do understand councillor Ephrington's hurt and to lessens them, I could understand them. And councillor, she is hurt because they were not actually part of this body when this incident took place. And having joined this council, what happened is by being part of this council, that expression of hurt becomes back to them and with that you have an obligation to either speak about it, ignore it, move it. So I hope that people will, with the slight amendment, that we must all see the press release before it goes out, support the principle of it. Because I wouldn't, in all good grace, if I was going to put my name to something, I want to know what I was putting my name to and the tenure of it and to be assured that it's not in any way accentuating the history of the past, but accentuating the future. And I think that's how I see it. If that's not in agreement with the majority, I'm quite happy to accept that. But I sat quietly to listen to what was said and my experience suggests that's probably the way forward.
Thank you. That's fine. I think it's important to say that it's incorrect when people think that we're reopening old wounds. In fact, the wounds haven't been healed. I saw people have contacted me after the 11th April meeting, people who weren't involved with this but were not very happy with how it was discussed in the council. So I think this statement, and I agree with councillor Stockton, obviously we all need to see it before it goes out. It's part of the healing process and showing the community that we are listening to them and, you know, this is our path forward. We're not looking back now. This is a positive step. We're looking forwards. Thank you. Councillor Trion.
Just a, an understanding really, if I may ask, the motion agreeers, is this two press releases or one? Because it starts with the town clerk to issue a press release and then further down the other sort of sentence or paragraph, the town clerk has been instructed to write a press release. So I didn't know whether they were gonna, I know we're going to decide or hopefully decide on some wording, but I didn't know whether it was two separate ones covering the first bit, which has got mainly the amendments in, and then another one with some other information in it.
Thank you. You can clarify that.
Yeah, if I can.
And expand.
Yes, of course. So this has been actually an incredibly difficult thing to draft. So our apologies for any lack of clarity. We are envisaging one press release and for the town clerk to draft this and it's in two sentences because it didn't go in one sentence and still makes sense. So we're talking about one press release.
I think councillor Stockton, President Amendment, to the amended version. If we were to go ahead with that amendment, I would be just practically really reluctant having an agreement that the press release is agreed, but it's then got to go through all 17 councils before it goes out. Because that, just on a practical basis, that could be quite difficult. So perhaps it could be agreed for me to liaise on with the mayor or the mayor and the chair of resources rather than all councils.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey.
Can I respond to that?
Well.
If it helps, if it helps, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to present town clerk to voice on that. That's a very reasonable thing given. I'm happy that you and the mayor, chair of resources, put the amendment in, did that properly. I'm not trying to monitor manage in any way.
Thank you.
I support that.
Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I'll just be honest, just to address that point. Personally, I trust the town clerk to draft the press release as we trust him to draft all of our press releases and to consult with people as he sees fit. I think all of us, especially the town clerk, who's been in the forefront of much of this, I think understand the sensitivities around this topic and I trust him completely to draft it in a way that would be suitable. Once he wants liaise with the mayor, that's fine with me. But I think, I don't, I don't believe that we should all be involved or indeed anyone beyond the mayor should be involved in the drafting of this whatsoever. This is something that has to come from the whole council. Only the mayor represents the whole council. So that's my principle. I don't want to change the standing orders and put every press release through 17 members edits first, which I don't think is practical. I get what you heard distresses councillor Heatherington. I felt incredibly hurt and distressed by this as well. I, as I indicated in my speech the last time we discussed this matter, this has kind of dented my love of being a town councillor significantly because it feels uncomfortable to me in the extreme to be part of an organisation, the leader of which did this some months ago. So I get that entirely and I'm certainly considering whether to carry on or to get re-elected or to go re-election or whatever in the future as well. He has got that much in mind for me too. I hear what you're saying councillor Cole. I still think there's more to do to actually to try and draw some sort of line. We may never draw a line under this matter. But this, this issue and the press release was discussed at several points in the meeting a few weeks ago. It got lost in the melee of that meeting and essentially this is just a motion to tie up that loose end that was left dangling at the end of that meeting because I think it will make a difference for some people. To be very clear, the town council as a body is fully distanced from any of the sentiments and the message that was, that was forwarded. And to hear and recognise the hurt and distress that that caused people in the community and it's still causing people. I met with some of them this week, but this is a matter that is still causing them distress. We have to kind of keep working with this and I don't think we can simply say we need to move on. This is an issue that permeates our society and something that we need to keep front of mind all the time. Our issue in consistency, tackling racism, tackling unfairness and so on, is something that is never going to be, should never be far away from us. So I just pretend the original point I made is that I really commend this to the council. I hope we can agree this motion unanimously. I sincerely hope and I know that the town clerk will draft a well-worded press release based around the words essentially of the motion in any case.
Thank you very much. Councillor Stockton.
I'd just say that we thought in discussion is an option on the table, which is a reasonable one to go forward to, as I said, lancing. I do think it's appropriate that it was good sell and that town resources read the press release, not to change it or it goes out. I think that is something we trust has been a precedent for that in the council vote. Now, per moving to the vote.
Thank you. Yeah, we haven't heard from councillor Ralph, so by the way.
Really, I'm a bit ambivalent, I think, simply because I understand very precisely what the motion is aiming at. I really understand that and have some sympathy with that. But equally, I'm almost convinced that if we put out press releases and make other publicity, it will be misunderstood and it will not be seen as what we're trying to achieve. It will be seen, on the one hand, some will see the individual involved is being picked on again. I don't say we are, but I'm saying that's how we'll be seen. And on the other hand, there will be those who complained and grumbled and they will not be satisfied. They were fairly offensive about the town council during our last meeting, if one does recall it. And I wondered if this is a stirring up which I think would be better left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we probably are moving towards a vote. If I can just make a couple of comments. I think, I think it is important as a town council that we do acknowledge the hurt that has been caused widely by all that has happened, both to members of our community, I mean, as councillor Heatherington has iterated as well, distressed town councillors as well because of what has happened. The difficult issue is how we can move forward and whether the press release will assist in that process to assist healing wounds. And we're hoping that with the diversity inclusion group starting, that we can get back on track with issues that we have dealt with in the past as well. So we'll move to this vote now, but I hope that whatever the outcome of this vote, we can move forward positively and in an inclusive way. As it does say at the bottom of our agenda, members are reminded when making decisions that the public expect for equality duty requires members to have due regard to the need to eliminate unlawful discrimination, harassment and victimisation and other conduct that is prohibited by the Act. Advance equality of opportunity between people who share a characteristic and those who don't and foster good relations between people who share a characteristic and those who don't. So I think we need to be mindful of that in everything we do. We are representing a diverse community and maybe our council doesn't fully reflect that. I think we have made strides to reflecting our community better than we did. But we have got a long way to go and people have been hurt by this issue on all sides. So sorry to make that statement, but however this decision goes, we do need to be moving forward, bearing in mind how we represent our diverse community in a positive way. So can we vote on that proposal then?
So we're voting on councillor Stockton's amendment.
Amendment to, for the.
So can I read that? I think.
Yes.
Please, I think it will be for the town clerk in liaison with the mayor and chair of resources to issue a press release distancing the town council explicitly from the social media message of concern to the subject of the recent decision by the Heatherington Subcommittee of Buckinghamshire Council and expressing our acknowledgement of the hurt and distress that the said social media messages cause members of our community. The town clerk in liaison with the mayor and chair of resources committed to instructing to write a press release, including the previously put motion, and explaining what action they're taking to help build a more inclusive Buckingham and restore the trust of all members of our community after this event.
Thank you. So can we vote on that proposal?
Only someone who's a second there.
Who will second that?
I will.
You will second that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Those in favour of that amendment, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those against?
Two.
Abstentions? So that amendment is carried. So we now vote on the proposal as amended. Those in favour of that proposal, please show.
One, two, three, four.
And those against?
One, two, three, four, five.
And abstentions?
One, two.
Thank you. So that proposal has fallen. But as I emphasised, we do need to be taking some of that, the spirit of what is in this proposal is important. We do need to heal wounds and move forward in a positive way for all of our membership. Thank you. So we now move to another motion. Councillor Shaker, Harvey and O'Mead have ruled it out. For the town clerk to write to the hearings subcommittee for Buckinghamshire Council to ask them to consider altering their code of conduct investigation process such that all those who are impacted by a breach of the code should have an opportunity to be consulted on the actions to be recommended. In this case, it would amend all the complainants and the town council, since our reputation has been damaged, being able to offer their ideas as to what could constitute proportionate actions. Just one proposal we should speak on. Councillor Harvey.
This is just trying, again, trying to tighten the example. One of the points that became clear at the meeting that we had a few weeks ago is that we were essentially being given the fait accompli by the Shire Council on what the sanctions or the appropriate actions or follow-through, whatever, would be following the breach of the Code of Conduct. It struck me, and from doing a bit more research and finding out about how this happened, is that there was, I believe, no role for us as the town council to give our perspective on having heard about the breach, having heard that decision, to say what we would think would be a suitable follow-through sort of actions. And also, I'm not even sure whether the people who made the complaints, and there were several, you can see on the report, were given an opportunity to, in a sense, to make their point as well. And I think we're all used to the idea that people who are, if you like, on the receiving end and who have been in some way affected by the breach or through natural justice, to have an optimism to say what they think would be a suitable sort of follow-through. The decision will still rest with the hearings subcommittee. But I do honestly think that any township town council in a similar circumstance to us in the future really ought to have had a chance to have made their, well, to have had a discussion first in the town council and then taken those views passed by the town clerk to the committee for the eventual decision. So it becomes a two-stage process. That would seem to be a fair way of doing things and mirror how things happen in other, you know, other instances of where misdemeanours are being examined. And that's the point of this, is to get into a dialogue with the Shire Council about this matter. They may say, no, pick a hike, we don't agree with you. But I think we've got to at least ask the question that there should be some involvement there.
Thank you. Did anybody else to speak? Councillor Marby and then councillor Stockton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am not happy about this motion. We are really being rather arrogant in telling Buckinghamshire Council how they should run their investigations. Their intermittent investigation, we were not the complainant. So I don't see how we now feel that we have the right to dictate how they should refer to us or listen to what we're trying to say. The outcome was based on, by the investigation carried out by Buckinghamshire Council and we should really respect the decision.
Thank you. Councillor Stockton.
Yeah, I understand the logic behind your question. With the way these things work, all the complainant's information would have been heard by the standards committee. None of us here, rightfully so, because it's a confidential meeting, would be present at that meeting because it's a confidential meeting and we shouldn't be so. What I am assure you is that their information, complaints would have been taken seriously. I think we know that because it took 18 months to get to a decision. So I think that shows that they looked at it long and hard. What we could do is not try to ask them to change their standing orders but to talk to them about how they would envisage amending their standing orders to accompany these type of problems. The thing is, it's a legalistic question about where the power rests. And because of the localism act, the localism act took all the powers away from standards committees to make mandatory decisions of such on it, but rather leaves them with the situation, which is what we were less with, which was the Finances and Standards Committee, which we can't go back on because that was done properly. What I would suggest is that a much more successful route this would be, if that was the route the proposal wishes to take, was to think a bit more detail about what you're trying to achieve. And then there's this perfectly logical opportunity to talk about this with a standing committee about how you feel that these things haven't been addressed and explain as a question to a standing committee, asking them to actually look at it. If you're right, this will be dealt with, quite rightly so, by a legal officer of the council who will write back to you and give you a legal response saying that the standards are what they are, the legislation is what it is. the legislation is what it is, and this is what decision we took by. So I think to engage through that an effort, if that was something you were willing to do, would produce a dialogue, in which case, if they then felt in due consideration that there does need to be an amendment for it, they can take it through due presses in Buckinghamshire Council after hearing the case to actually amend it. Because what we've got here doesn't really get you to where the decisions are going to be taken. It gets you to the democratic service and legal officers of the council, which are duty bound to give you a pushback. My suggestion is you can do this as an individual. Or you could seek agreement with the council to do that. But I think it needs a little bit more preparation. It needs a little bit more detail of what you want to actually achieve. And it needs to be recognised legal statute, which it doesn't really do so. And that's where I would go. Having personally changed the constitution of the council to allow town and parish councils to have a speaking committees, it's quite long. But if you stay with it, you can amend it. That's not to say I disagree with the sentiment, John, I just don't think it's going to get the response you want. And then we will be heard by the response we get, which will be a legalistic response to a legalistic question. And that's not in any way criticising the proposer of this. It's just, I've sat on standards committees and I've done these things before. And we have to work with the structure. That's just a suggestion. It might not be something that people want to listen to and talk about, but I have got a little bit of experience in these things. And I hope that my little bit of experience, and I'm not a lawyer, and I haven't got a found knowledge, will give you a clue how to best proceed.
So have we just proposed amendment to the proposal in that case? To write to somebody different from my hearing subcommittee?
Ma'am, I was asked, it was more of a conversation with the proposers rather than making an amendment here, because I think unless I have understanding with the proposers, who I am not criticizing what they're doing, it's really pointless to put an amendment to there because it should be a conversation. It shouldn't be one person posing a view on the other. That's not how we should do things.
Thank you. And councillor Col, then councillor Harley.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I'm going to support this motion. I think it's a very good motion. It's been drawn up. I hear what councillor Stutbury says. We're not questioning the standards committee or the hearing subcommittee. What we're questioning is the fact this hearing has held to investigate a complaint against one councillor. The result of this hearing was that the whole council and its officers were blamed. I mean, the finding recommends a programme of training for all councillors and officers. That was the result. That subcommittee exceeded its authority, it exceeded its brief. This goes against everything to do with natural justice. If they want to punish us, as it were, in some way, then we have a right to be heard. And the subcommittee can't just willingly accuse people left, right and centre, find them guilty without actually hearing from those people, without giving those people a chance to defend themselves. That goes against all natural justice. I think it's an extremely good motion and I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Councillor Harley.
Yeah, to respond to councillor Stutbury's suggestions, I mean, I think it's about, it's a notion to read out just again. It's simply to ask and consider. So the kind of conversation that you're talking about would come from such an invitation. We're not telling them what to do. We're not saying that we know more about the law than they do. We're simply saying, this was our experience. Could you please look into this a little bit more? Because we have a perspective on it. I think that's quite reasonable to ask that question. I don't think, and we're probably will get a reply from one of the monitoring officers, they've got to say whatever. Fair enough. And then we'll look at the reply and decide whether we want to go back any further or we say, okay, fair enough, that's why they do things where they do things. But I think to ask the question, surely everyone, everyone will ask a question. And I think it will carry more weight if this comes from the town council as a body.
Thank you. Because the alternative, really, if we do nothing, if we just ignore this, is that they're not aware then necessarily of the impact that this is having on the whole council. So anyway, shall we move, are we ready to move to councillor Trig?
Thank you. Yeah, I also think that it's been badly worded. I think they, you know, the hearing subcommittee have got a a process which they have got written down and went through duly to do. And within this motion, and that's what we've got to consider written in front of us, it says that all those who have been impacted, well, that's almost infinitum. And I don't think that it will go to the officer and they'll see that from a legalistic way and then say, well, that's not possible, then we'll bring it back. And it's not practical to ask for all actions and ideas because then you could get snowballed and also the actions could almost be engineered by those complainants to have some impact that maybe the heading hearing subcommittee isn't really there for. So that's why I don't think it's been really well worded. As for the town council, of course, the hearing subcommittee will deal with a lot of code of conduct and other things. And here we're really trying to detail it down to include a town council. But there could be other ways and reasons and bodies, all sorts of things. So if it was going to be rewritten, then instead of the town council, it should have said the body that would have to implement the recommendations or something, rather than specifying a town council. But I'm not going to propose an amendment. And since our reputation has been damaged in brackets, well, has it in the broader sense, maybe, through all of our community? Yes, it has in some areas, but I'm not so sure if you went to somebody now, you know, a percentage that most of them would even know about it. So I won't be supporting that for those reasons.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Stutbury.
Just to come back briefly, I thank you councillor Harvey for coming back to me and explaining your rationale. That was much appreciated and it's about a discussion, not a possum of you. I think my understanding of it is the reading of the findings was published, but the letter to the town council was of much different wording in that, in the sense that it said in the findings, the council had to do X and in the other thing, it concentrated on the individual. I think it was that wording which I think brushstrokes everybody quite unreasonably in the same position. None of us were party of any of that and I think that's a reasonable suggestion. I wish, I would support the motion because I wish to get clarity on this. And I won't seek to amend it, but I think we could be here all night hosting the members, which to be honest, won't make any difference. The question will be the same question. So I, you know, I say that as a response to what councillor Harvey says and a response to what councillor Mark Col says and noting councillor Trig's opinion.
Thank you. Councillor Harley.
And I would just add some points of information. This was the first and only breach of code of conduct that that committee had dealt with. They'd not done it before under the new Buckinghamshire Council, under the new constitution. And I'm guessing they probably would appreciate some feedback on how the process worked, especially how it worked for us. Because obviously, it's we're the body that they're making decisions for and therefore we do have, we do have a role surely in saying this could have been done better, which is effectively what we're saying. For example, they said we should have a social media policy. We have a social media policy. And they didn't get that even in detail correct. So therefore, it's about making sure that whatever actions are agreed are ones that people had some chance to have their say about it. The decision-making power will still rest with the committee. A member of the actual judgment came from the committee. And whilst I hear you saying something about the letter that came from the monitoring officer, that wasn't published. The only thing that was published was the actual decision made by the hearing subcommittee. And therefore, it's that that we are reacting to and so forth. Yeah, I heard all the mitigations in the letter from the ground and everything else. But that isn't, that isn't public. And yeah, you've adopted a very legalistic interpretation of the motion, but it's simply saying, let's have a dialogue. These are some of the rules we've got by improving the process. That's affecting what the motion is saying.
Thank you. And again, we trust the town clerk to write the letter. Thank you very much. Oh, councillor Donahue, then can we move to the vote?
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm torn on it because on the one hand, we're asking a larger council to listen to the lesser councils. But then on the other hand, if they're going to be asking to be consulted or listened to, then they're going to have to do that with all the councils under their remit. So that process is probably going to be quite long and hard work for them to do. But there was, yeah, if there's anything out of their process that I felt could have been improved, it was what councillor Moore, you said actually three weeks ago, is that when an accusation has been made, Facebook won't talk to a person, they will only talk to legal teams. Buckinghamshire Council has a legal team. And in this instance, they didn't make contact with Facebook to find out whether councillor Collins's Facebook had been.
I think I'm probably drifting off the point now. Can we stick to what we've got on the table about writing to the hearing subcommittee? So thank you. Can we move to the vote then? Those in favour of this motion, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those against?
One, two, three.
Any abstentions? Thank you. So that is carried. I, sadly, we're looking at recruitment of a new clerk. I'm sure everybody wishes to express to our current town clerk, well, congratulations on his new appointment. It's our sadness that they're losing him.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we do need to agree a process to recruit a new town clerk. And hopefully, everybody's read the documents that have been sent around with these papers. Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I think what the town clerk has set out entirely is entirely appropriate. And I propose that we just simply accept it and move on.
Thank you. Yes, I can add. Thank you. Okay.
But quite secondly, I'd like to personally show, record in the minute, a complete thanks for all the work the town clerk's done. The due diligence he's given to the job, the effort he's put into the job and the goodwill that he's put into Buckingham when the time is here. And can we at least in some way or jointly recognise that it's a big decision for the town clerk to move on? We wish him every success. Clearly, we regret that he's moving on, but he has got to grow his career. And I respect that. And if I'm ever down that way, I'm annoyed.
Thank you very much. And I've felt personally very supported by him since I've been there. Thank you. Councillor Trig.
Uh, thank you. I'm on a short, well, I'm short on my own mind, but I would have thought driving licence was essential rather than desirable. Only to get in from A to B and down to Aylesbury for meetings and in good time. So, I mean, you may argue that it's discriminatory, but, you know.
If I may, I might say hypothetically, you could have an application for someone who can't drive for whatever reason, for whatever reason. There are buses to Aylesbury, people use teams, you can certainly walk and circle around Buckingham. I mean, it isn't there as desirable, so it's something which we've taken into account by the decision makers. But what if there was a candidate who was stunning my head field compared to all the other candidates, except for that one issue and it looked like a legitimate issue? I just think you're giving the hand of the opportunity to make a decision in that light. So you're not, you're totally binding on to say that it has to be someone who drives. I can see hypothetical circumstances, which you might look at for someone who couldn't, if that was available. But it's, it is a bit of a borderline one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Harley. I'm councillor Harley. I'm looking at councillor Stutbury and I'm saying the wrong name. Sorry.
Can I just say that we can call it disability, that we've got on the council. You could have a situation where the person that we want to take the job cannot drive because they're disabled and may need a driver. And I think it's appropriate, having struggled with the historical district council and having to put a motion there to get them to actually rep, by the disability acts of public record, to actually recognise the disability in planning terms, which this council did. I think we recognise that and we have to recognise that the replies job may not have full capacity, but they may have a brilliant brain. We shouldn't in any way bow to all that. So I think, I trust the people from the committee to make the, right, obviously I'm on it, but I trust myself. But I do trust all the other people to be quite diligent with the comments made, that I think we have to respect the disability act.
And it is a desirable, essentially, yes. Councillor Donahue.
Thank you, ma'am. That is what I was going to say. It is undesirable. So the disability discrimination act doesn't come into it because it's under style.
Okay, can we vote on the recommendations then to the council advertised for new town clerk using the attached documents? Those in favour of that, please show.
It's you nurse.
Thank you. And the second one, that the panel listed be formed and the dates given the use of the process, those in favour?
Could I maybe just ask a question on that one?
Don't it?
Has anybody considered a temporary town clerk if we don't appoint in this panel?
Town clerk.
So there are lots of issues, not in this paper. One of those issues will be what we do to presumably at least cover anyway. So resources, of course, before council, before we get to this point, will be discussing that subject. So there are options around doing.
Thank you very much.
Ask the current deputy to act up. Do we bring a local, but we'll deal with that between now and then.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I think we have voted.
We have voted and then we had another discussion.
Or do we need to do it again?
I didn't count the votes out, so.
Can we just, just to, so to, just in case of any future concern, can we make that vote again? Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you. Thank you very much for your help with the paper, town clerk. Chairs announcements. You should have all received an invitation to the mayor making event on the 10th of June. Can you please make sure that the replies go back to Amanda no later than the 23rd of May? And as soon as, as soon as you're sure whether you can come in yet. So it's important that we have the numbers. Councillor Ralph.
I'm going to say something in fact because I've already seen this via email. I don't have to do it again.
No, no.
There's certainly enough rolls and all that's.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's all I'm to say. The next meetings, annual statutory meeting, the 30th of May and full council, the 30th of May, interim on the 27th of June. Thank you, everybody. That completes the business.